I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Kinsella, Alderman Hazel, Alderwoman Pousa, Alderwoman Duco, Alderman Randall, Alderman Ferguson, Alderman Anthony, Alderman Ovian, Alderman Dittelman, Alderwoman Schaefer, Alderwoman Steele, Alderman Rathwiler, Alderman Elmore, Alderman Weigant, Alderman Wiggington, Alderman Barfield.
Alderman Pousa is excused. Roll call, Department Heads.
City Treasurer Hart, City Attorney Horner, Police Chief Bill Clay, Fire Chief Tom Poor, Finance Director Jamie Maitrait, Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn, Director of Public Works Jason Poole, Director of Waste Water Royce Carlisle, Director of Residential and Commercial Development Services Anissa McCaskill, Director of Library Leander Spearman, Director of IT Scott Markovich.
Leander is excused, Chief Clay is excused, Garrett's on his way, he called a couple minutes ago. Who else do we have out tonight?
Jason Poole.
Jason Poole is excused.
Clay and Poor.
And Poor, but Deputy Fire Chief and the Assistant Police Chief are both here.
And Royce, did you say?
And Royce I excused also.
And Randy's here.
Randy's here. So, man, get that scorecard. Okay, with that said, if I didn't forget anybody, if those who are willing or able, not willing, please stand for the pledge. I'm probably the most difficult one to do this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know, it's birthday on Saturday, it must have been more significant than I thought because everything's falling apart. Two weeks I get a new hip and today I went to the doctor and my opposite leg knee is swelled up, so he, working on it, trying to get me by, but it's old injuries coming back. Okay ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I want to, before I get into any public participation, I want to make one recognition here. I don't know if you saw it in today's paper, but I do want to recognize, the Belleville Ardenne Square rejoins the top five nationwide in sales. They came in at number four for 2019, that's significant. I know in talking with Patty and Tom Barnett in the last year, two or three, some of those different criteria had changed a little bit, but that is fabulous that we once again are in the top five, but particularly number four. So, my congratulations to Patty, Patty Gregory, to the entire committee, Tom Barnett who chairs that board. I know there's many of you in here, Jenny Still's active, Mary served for many, many, many years. I know Jane's not here tonight, but she was very active, and many other, and the city staff. You work very closely with them and tireless. So, again, if you get a chance, I certainly will send Patty and the board a letter tomorrow, but this is a great article, if you get a chance to read it and continue to spread the news because that's nothing but good information for Belleville. And we'll post that well tomorrow and share that many times. At that point, with that said, I will now open, if there's anybody here this evening who would like to address the console for public participation. Anyone this evening? Hearing none, I will close public participation, and I will go on to my first item under recognitions and presentations and appointments. Tonight, in your packet, you have a much awaited appointment of a new city engineer. And tonight in front of you, I present, and all the terms and the agreements are in the letter I sent you in your packet, his bio. I think the one thing you'll find interesting, this gentleman has even some city council experience, but he's got more than that, probably thirty years plus of engineering experience. And we look forward to working with Michael. It's been a challenge finding a qualified enthusiastic person that we also felt had to have, one of the main traits too was being a good communicator and a good listener. And so, we look forward, and if there's any position, I'm asking for a motion to recommend my appointment of Michael Veloff for the position of city engineer effective February 12th would be his start date. Alderman Wiggington, Ferguson II. Any discussion, anything I didn't fill in or you didn't read? Roll call.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rathwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries, it's unanimous. Michael, you want to stand up, let the crowd know who you are, that nice, loud bright tie. If, I don't know if you, February 10th is what we're locked in, you're starting. Now I will just say this in his defense, go easy on him. I might be out, but we'll be in contact, believe me. He'll probably visit me in my living room while I'm recuperating a little bit from my hip, but he'll do great, we just got to help each other. It's a big job. I do want to say, we look forward to it, Michael, and the transition will take a little time, but I think you're going to enjoy this council and this group of department heads. I think you'll truly enjoy it. Okay. And as I thank him for being here tonight and congratulate Michael on a new start, I want to thank Kenny Vaughn and Colette Parsons, and I want to thank Kaskaskia Engineering, Jerry Boyer, Jason Poole from his Public Works. We've been working together as a team since September, and it doesn't mean that anything has slowed down or come to a halt. These guys have helped me and all of us together maintain a lot of projects and maintain a lot of good communication, and we're still turning in grants, things that we, paperwork we have to, and reports, and motor fuel, some things are on the agenda tonight. So, I just want to say a very sincere thank you to all those I mentioned because this has been a team effort, engineering, on the waiting for Michael to get here, and we'll continue, Michael, to give you that same support because we know that you've got a few other voids in that office we've got to take care of, and we're going to help you, and we're going to strengthen that so you feel very comfortable. So, again, thanks to everyone for this transition, okay? Moving on, that's the only appointment tonight. We go on to approval of minutes. I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council and executive session minutes from January 6, 2020. Motion by Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear any discussions, are changes, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, and receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go to claims, payroll, and disbursements. I'd ask for
Aye.
a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $1,792,072.22, and the payroll
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rathwiler.
Aye.
in the amount of $888,868.74. Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Dittelman. Discussion
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
on those items as need to be approved so we can pay all these bills and salaries. Roll
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
call.
Aye.
Hazel. Ferguson.
Aye.
Aye.
Duco. Anthony.
Aye.
Aye.
Randall. Ovian.
Aye.
Aye.
Ferguson. Dittelman.
Aye.
Aye.
Anthony. Schaefer.
Aye.
Aye.
Ovian. Steele.
Aye.
Aye.
Dittelman. Rathwiler.
Aye.
Aye.
Schaefer. Elmore.
Aye.
Aye.
Steele. Weigant.
Aye.
Aye.
Rathwiler. Wiggington.
Aye.
Aye.
Elmore. Barfield.
Aye.
Aye.
Weigant. Kinsella.
Aye.
Aye.
Wiggington. Hazel.
Aye.
Aye.
Barfield. Duco.
Aye.
Aye.
Kinsella. Randall.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. We go to reports. First couple are from administration. I'd ask someone
Ferguson.
Aye.
to make, consider a motion to approve a facility use agreement between Lyndon Wood University
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Belleville and the city of Belleville for the use of the softball fields at South Side
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rathwiler.
Aye.
Park through May 30 of 2020 in the amount of $4,000. Alderman Schaefer, do I hear a
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
second? Alderman Ferguson, do I hear discussion on that agreement? Roll call.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Motion carries. I'd now like to ask for a motion to extend the dispatch contract
Aye.
with Signal Hill Fire Protection District for an additional year from January 1, 2020
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
to December 31, 2020. Do I hear that motion? Alderman Anthony, and second by Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Any discussion on that request? Roll call.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rathwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, I'm going to ask you to consider, and Jason's not here tonight, he was excused, but I just want you to know that Jason and I had, Jason Poole, Director of Public Works, have had extensive conversations in my office in the last couple months about the pilot program for Parks and Recreation and Public Works. He also talked with the park board recently. We're both recommending that we would continue this pilot for another year, and that would, including the continuation of the annual $10,000 stipend for Jason as interim director of Parks and Recreation through April 14 of 2021. We've talked it over, and we know that we're still, as a staff and several groups here, looking at a lot of different possibilities for the future. We have the good news, and we're working on now getting closer to come to you for implementation for a possible splash pad that we were so wonderfully awarded money in the Capitol bill for. And we are still talking and haven't cut off those talks completely about the future of a recplex or some kind of swimming facility. So, what we talked about, that in itself would drastically change the Parks and Rec, or at least the recreation side of the department, because you'd have to find people who had the capabilities of organizing, putting together, or managing such facilities. Jason knows that that would well be out of his scope, but we agree that while we're still kind of looking, and that while we're still not only looking, but we're continuing to investigate and listen, we would recommend tonight, I'm recommending, that we extend the pilot for one more year as we have done it. And I've talked to a lot of different staff people, and I, big thing is I talked to Jason and wanted to make sure I wasn't hurting him, and he is very willing. He said, no, I would happily do this, continue this. He does feel, and I'm not trying to put words in his mouth when he's not here, but I think all of us feel that the Parks Department under Public Works is a smart move. The recreation, but he knew the recreation side of it, so I'm not saying it's easy for him, but it's been a relatively smooth transition for him to manage that. So, that's my recognition, this recommendation this evening, is that we would ask for a motion to continue that pilot for one more year. Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Dittelman, who served many years on the park board. Any further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rathwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go on to motions from ordinance. Alderman Wiggington.
Before I read 11-B1, I'd like to refer to Jenny. We had a last minute change.
Yes. Oh, it's in front of me. Yeah. I emailed you shortly after 5 o'clock. I apologize for the late notice. On the ordinance, section 124.02, item C, is being deleted. We had talked, discussed this at ordinance and legal review. It was meant to be deleted, and the employee and customer parking is then addressed in section 124.03, oh, I'm sorry, 124.04, number 5, by extending the section from 162.435 through 162.465. So, those were just, had not been corrected.
So, we would ask that in your motion, you would duly note those amendments to the motion that they have, the packet they have in front of them.
So then, is 11-B1, is, if I, should I read that?
Yeah, and what you have there is still correct.
Okay, and then refer to any changes.
Per that amendment she read.
Per that amendment, yes.
Right, exactly, all right. Okay, 11-B1, on behalf of ordinance and legal, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance in Title 11 Business Regulations by adding Chapter 124, Used Car Dealers, Section 124.01 through 124.06, plus the amendments that were just read by the city clerk. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Randall, do I hear discussion on this item?
I do have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
The changes that were made that separated the employee parking, did that in any way affect the number of spaces?
No, it does not, no.
No. Okay, good question though. Hearing no other questions, roll call.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rathwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wiggington.
11-B2, on behalf of ordinance and legal, I'd like to make a motion to approve additions, amendments to Chapter 150 Building Code, Building Regulations, Sections 150.32N, Solar Energy Systems, 150.38L, Electric Permit Table, 150.380, Residential Solar Energy Systems Permit, Table 1, and 150.38P, Commercial and Industrial Solar Energy Systems Permit, Table 1, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Randall. Once again, any discussions on this item? We had a very good discussion about it in ordinance the other night. We had all of our professionals, which are here again tonight, if there's some questions, but I think everybody by now, the word's kind of spread, and the need for this and the explanation. So, if there's no further questions, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rathwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Motion carries. One more.
11-B4, on behalf of ordinance and legal, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells, or by any other method within certain areas in the city of Belleville, 420 Carlisle Avenue, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, once again, Alderman Randall. Any discussion on that coming from ordinance? Roll call.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rathwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothwiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.[1308.03]
Oppose, motion carries. We go through Streets and Grades now, back to Alderman Wigginton.
There we go. Eleven dash D one, on behalf of Streets and Grades, like a motion to approve donating to the fire department for training purposes, then scrapping a two thousand one Chevrolet Blazer, VIN number one GNDT one-three WX one-two one-eight-one-five-seven-two. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Wigginton, second by Alderman Consilla. Any discussion on this first item coming from Streets and Grades? Roll call.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go to eleven D two.
Eleven D two, on behalf of Streets and Grades, I'd like to make a motion to approve the municipal estimate of maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code in the amount of one million, eight hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred three dollars and twenty cents for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one MFT funds. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Wigginton, I hear a second. Second by Alderman Steele, do I hear discussion on eleven D two? Roll call.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have no problem reading them one at a time, but they all passed unanimously in committee.
Yeah.
Correct? So it's up to you guys. Do you want to read the rest of them as a group, or it's up to you?
Group.
Okay, you got it.
Is that okay? Anybody against that? Alderman Wigginton, you can take eleven D three through seven as a group.
You got it. On behalf of Streets and Grades, I'd like to make a motion to approve Kaskaskia Engineering Incorporated in the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars for the West Belleville Bike Trail Phase Two. Eleven D four, make a motion to approve Kaskaskia Engineering Incorporated in the amount of two hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety dollars for the West Main Street skate, twelve to Seventeenth Street. Eleven D five, motion to approve SCI Engineering Incorporated for consulting and engineering services at various locations. Eleven D six, motion to approve Phase Two Stormwater Monitoring Proposal for January two thousand twenty to December two thousand twenty between the city and RGN Group Incorporated, the amount of four thousand six hundred dollars. At eleven D seven, motion to amend a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint agreement with St. Clair County, Illinois, Frank Scott Parkway, and North Belt West. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Wigginton, second by Alderman Duco. Any discussion on these group of motions here that came out of Streets and Grades and passed there unanimously? Roll call.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wygant.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to finance. Alderman Consilla.
On behalf of Finance Committee, I'd like to make a notion to, a motion to approve finance, I get a notion once in a while, to approve financing from Bank of Belleville at two point one-nine percent for the purchase of two street departments, snow and ice unit dump trucks, and one automated sanitation truck.
Motion by Consilla, second by Schaefer. Any discussion on eleven E one? Hearing none, roll call.
Wygant.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Hazel.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Rothweiler.
Aye.
Elmore.
Those motions carry. Oh, that motion carries, I'm sorry. Last one was a group. We go to communications. Is there any reason the clerk can't read these as a group?
No.
Okay, we will ask our dear clerk to read them as a group.
Twelve A, Lincoln Theater Concert, Old Salt Union Winter Ball, one twenty-five, two thousand twenty. Request from Lincoln Theater to use ten public parking spaces in Lot Behind Establishment for parking of tour buses and trailers on Saturday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Requesting one parking space in City Lot Behind the Theater for a beer trailer Friday, January twenty-fourth, through Monday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Emergency egress from alley will be maintained. Additional city services requested, six barricades. Twelve B, Lincoln Theater Concert, Wynona and the Big Noise, two twenty, two thousand twenty. Request from Lincoln Theater to use ten public parking spaces in Lot Behind Establishment for parking of tour buses and trailers on Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty. Requesting one parking space in City Lot Behind the Lincoln Theater for a beer trailer Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty. Emergency egress from alley will be maintained. Additional city services requested, six barricades. Twelve C, Lincoln Theater Concert, Traveling Salvation Show, three twenty-one, two thousand twenty. Request from Lincoln Theater to use ten public parking spaces in Lot Behind Establishment for parking of tour buses and trailers Saturday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty. Requesting one parking space in City Lot Behind the Lincoln Theater for a beer trailer Friday, March twentieth, through Monday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty. Emergency egress from alley will be maintained. Additional city services requested, six barricades. Twelve D Memorial Day Ceremony, five twenty-five, two thousand twenty. Request from Belleville Memorial Day Association to hold the Memorial Day Ceremony Monday, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty, Walnut Hill Cemetery, eleven AM to twelve PM. Additional city services requested, access to flagpoles, porta-potties, four-ten-by-ten tents, and fifty chairs. Twelve E, Thanksgiving Day Five K, Thursday, eleven twenty-six, two thousand twenty. Request from the Belleville Township Ice Hockey Club to hold the Thanksgiving Five K and Turkey Chase Thursday, November twenty-six, two thousand twenty, eight AM to ten fifteen AM. Street closure request, seven thirty AM to ten fifteen AM, start and finish line first block of West Main Street from one fifty-nine to east side of First Street and northwest quadrant of Public Square. Five K route, rolling street closure within city limits. Additional city services requested, barricades, no parking signs, trash toders, electric, and police department personnel.
Do I hear a motion to approve twelve A, B, C, D, and E for communications? Alderman Rothweiler, second by Alderman Ferguson. Any discussion on the ones just read by the clerk? All in favor of approving these communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We have no petitions this evening. I'd ask for a motion. Wait a minute. Yeah, no petitions. Let me flip my page here. Resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Resolution thirty-three seventy-one and thirty-three seventy-two and thirty-three seventy-three. And as a group, so I hear a motion for that. Alderman Schaefer, and second by Ferguson, has hand up first, to read those three resolutions by title only and as a group. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.[1395.44]